The legislative district is here flag of the United States of America and here republic for which saints, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Roll call.
Alderman and Hager. She is passing. Alderman Zenen Duda.
Here.
Alderman Kathy Burman. Here. Alderman.
Here.
Peril agenda. Make a motion to approve the agenda.
I second that motion.
Motion first, second, all approved.
Aye.
May day. Motion adopted. All right. Fifteen cents to agenda. Do that motion or make a motion to approve consent agenda. All right, we have second. Motion first, second, all approved.
Aye.
May day. Public for Ms. Mary, would you like to talk a little bit? Can you hear me, Mary?
Sorry, I had to mute it. Um, yeah, you just want me to talk about what we did this week?
Yeah, just for you to read it a little bit and anything findings.
Okay, um, so as you all know, we had meetings with county commission and with the public water supply district that the city buys water from in an effort to see if there was any money available to help the city with the amount of money that they are paying for water currently on a wholesale basis and then to see if there was ARCA money available for the city to use for some of the issues with the grinder pumps and or the sledge removal. So I'm not sure which of those are going to their point if they are. The good news is that the water supply district has been working with the city in the past. And so we have a letter to that that will be put in the city's file so that you guys know going forward exactly what your rates are that you pay. The other thing that we're working on is, and I believe there's a resolution before the council this evening, to apply for the clean water engineering report grant that will get you guys started on the engineering study that will be required to apply for funding, both grant funding and or loan money to upgrade the waste water treatment facility. The engineer request for qualifications was sent to the paper and I believe Adam, it should have been outprinted yesterday, so that is in process as well. This time next month, you should have some qualifications to review from interested engineering companies so that you can move forward with that. Right now, I believe that the city will qualify for at least an eighty, twenty grand. We're hoping for a hundred percent, but we'll just have to see what the department says once they get the application. Other than that, Adam and I are working on a, I guess, a kind of an order of activities so that the council and the mayor know that these are the things that need to be worked on and in what order and kind of on a timeline so that the projects don't get bogged down and deadlines get missed. So I hope to have that to Adam next week. And then if there are any questions as we start going through that, you know, I'll be back down to do more training for the council.
Hey, Mary, can you also email that to me? This is April, by the way.
Sure, sure, absolutely.
All right, thank you.
You're welcome. Um, let's see.
Uh.
Right now, loser.
Let's see, you emailed me water rate study.
Yes, I did email you the information request for the water rate, water sewer rate study. And once I get that information, then I'll put that into the spreadsheets and then we'll talk about rates. I know you guys are getting ready to go through developing a budget for this next fiscal year. And I think that finding out where you are right now, what your expenses for water and sewer are and where your rates are will help inform that budget process, also with getting the bids for sledge removal. You know, probably need to do that annually, so we need to plug some money in for that into your budget. So there will be some things coming up that we'll need to talk about in that process.
All right, anything else? Anything that is done all week?
Yeah, it's been an intense week for sure. Um, you know, I know that you guys are working on water loss and we've talked about water meter replacement. You know, there's just a lot of things that I think we could spend money on. The trick is prioritizing the things that are of an emergency, number one on the list kind of items, so that we don't get stuck in additional noncompliance going down the road. I think right now you guys are in a decent state. Wants to get the sledge removed from the sledge holding bases at the waste water plant. I think that the plant will perform better particularly in this warm weather. And so that will give you guys some breathing room to do some engineering studies and just set priorities instead of fixing things, you know, just because everything will work.
You cut off for a second.
Questions?
Oh, Mary, you cut it out here last and did your example.
Oh, I said that hopefully the engineering study will help to develop priorities and work that needs to be done first so that you're working on a plan instead of just the emergencies that catch by are in front of you.
Mary, I have a question. This is Zenen Duda speaking.
Yes.
In our, you know, attached to in our monthly, in our meetings, we have a consent agenda which includes amendments to the previous meeting and collectors' report, treasurer's report. So referencing the monthly budget report, you know, it shows the degree of utilization of the funds in different areas. So looking at both streets, park, and water, we're not fully, you know, we're at forty percent utilized. This is an April report. So we have still a few months ago, I'm presuming that there'll be some that we haven't spent towards the end of the budget year period. So when that occurs, if we have residual amounts, can we then apply that to our wastewater plant issues and or grinder issues, you know, for the sewer department?
The grinder issues, yes. The short answer to that is yes.
Okay.
Fund balances that were unspent in the water sewer department this year can definitely be used for that. So in a city budget, there are like general revenue kind of things that are financed by property taxes, sales taxes, things like that. The water and sewer part of the budget are what are called enterprise funds. So in a general fund, whatever money is not spent during the budget year, everything goes back into the big bucket and the budget process starts at zero. For the enterprise funds, depending on how the city does it, those funds stay in the water and sewer accounts. So that money then goes on toward the next fiscal year and those don't get swept into the general fund account. And that is because those are kind of a business enterprise if you want to think of it that way, that the rates that you charge pay for the services and the water that the citizens use. So it's a little bit different, I think, than some of the small communities do from time to time, just because there's not a lot of sales tax revenue or anything to run the town on. And I think really that's, you guys are in a better position because you get part of the county's street tax or road tax, so that definitely helps you. We just have to figure out what those numbers are and just kind of delve into the details a little bit further maybe than you want to ask them in the past.
Okay, thank you.
I believe, I believe in a transparent budgeting process. I think that the more people who have the information and understand how it works the better the city is equipped to make decisions.
Absolutely.
Anybody else have any questions? All right, well, Mary, I guess if nobody else has any questions, I guess you'll be in touch.
Yes.
And I guess I forwarded email to April about the what they sent you for their water rain study.
Okay.
And we'll get it over on that.
Sounds good.
I will be out next week though, just to let you know. So it might be a little bit, I get that sent to you.
That's fine. The rest of my month is pretty crazy with travel and other means, so after the first of July, I'm gonna start, bless you.
Okay.
And then it'll take some time to get all the data together anyway.
Okay.
All right, well, thank you, Mary.
Thank you.
Take your time and I appreciate you taking the time out of your evening to join us, so.
You're welcome.
All right, well, you have a good evening.
Thank you.
Have a good one.
Bye.
Bye. Bill 977, the ordinance established the city of St. Mary, Alderman and Mayor authorization to enter an auction agreement. Do we want to have a stand up board vote or is creating heading only?
Make a motion to address this issue. Any one to vote now?
I second that motion.
Motion made, seconded. Roll call, roll.
Aye.
Alderman and Hager. Alderman Zenen Duda.
Aye.
Alderman Kathy Burman.
Aye.
Alderman Brendan Thompson.
Aye.
All right, Bill number 997, an ordinance to establish the city of St. Mary, Alderman and Mayor authorization to enter an auction agreement.
Roll call, roll. Second reading, second to read. Second read, roll it all though.
Who's second said?
My second.
Oh, wait, I have a second one. I have a correction.
Bill number 997, an ordinance to establish the city of St. Mary, Alderman and Mayor authorization to enter an auction agreement.
Roll call.
Alderman and Hager. Alderman Zenen Duda.
Aye.
Alderman Kathy Burman.
Aye.
Alderman Brendan Thompson.
Aye.
Motion adopted. Next bill, you want me to read it or you want me to?
Make a motion to vote on Bill 998. Motion made, seconded.
Roll call.
Alderman and Hager. Alderman Zenen Duda.
Aye.
Alderman Kathy Burman.
Aye.
Alderman Brendan Thompson.
Aye.
Bill number 998, an ordinance to establish the city of St. Mary's, St. Mary Missouri, oh, St. Mary, Mary, may? Let's start.
It's a lot of mayors and mayors towns.
Yeah, Bill number 998, an ordinance to establish the city of St. Mary, Mayor with consent and approval of majority of the members of the board, Alderman, to appoint officer and certain professional services, which we had the first reading last month, we didn't get the second reading for the city's, so this will be the second reading.
And the bill number?
And the bill number, yeah.
Okay. There is first, second motion, all right, roll call.
Alderman and Hager. Alderman Zenen Duda.
Here, yeah, aye.
Kathy Burman.
Aye.
Alderman Brendan Thompson.
Aye.
Bill 998, adopted, passed. Bill triple nine, an ordinance pertaining to issuing right of way permits require bonding for this, bonding for business and or contractors on new installation of utilities within the city of St. Mary and designation when this ordinance takes place. No effect.
Motion. Make a motion to approve.
Second.
Motion made, seconded, roll call.
Alderman Brendan Thompson.
Aye.
Alderman Kathy Burman.
Aye.
Alderman Zenen Duda.
Aye.
Alderman and Hager, absent. Okay, Bill number 999, an ordinance pertaining to issuing right of way permits and require bonding for business and or contractors on new installation of utilities within the city of St. Mary's and designation when this ordinance takes effect.
Motion. Make a motion to approve, second reading.
I second that motion.
Motion made, seconded, roll call.
Alderman Brendan Thompson.
Aye.
Alderman and Hager, absent. Alderman Zenen Duda.
Aye.
Alderman Kathy Burman.
Aye.
All right, so.
Bill number 999, an ordinance pertaining to issuing right of way permits and requiring bonding for businesses and or contractors on new installation of utilities within the city of St. Mary's and designation when this ordinance takes effect.
Motion.
Make a motion to approve.
Motion made, seconded. Motion made, seconded, roll call.
Alderman Brendan Thompson.
Aye.
Alderman Kathy Burman.
Aye.
Alderman Zenen Duda.
Aye.
Alderman and Hager, absent.
All right, motion made, adopted. Bill 1000, we made it. We made it to 1000. An ordinance establishing appointment of a nuisance abatement officer as a member designated by the public works department by heading only as a motion.
Make a motion to approve, Bill 1000, and name only.
Second.
Motion made, seconded.
Roll call.
Alderman Kathy Burman.
Aye.
Alderman Zenen Duda.
Aye.
Alderman Brendan Thompson.
Aye.
Alderman and Hager, absent. Bill number 1000, an ordinance establishing the appointment of a nuisance abatement officer as a member designated by the public works department.
Make a motion to approve.
Yes.
Second reading of Bill 1000.
I second that.
Motion made, seconded, roll call.
Alderman Zenen Duda.
Aye.
Alderman and Hager, absent. Alderman Kathy Burman.
Aye.
Alderman Brendan Thompson.
Aye.
All right, motion adopted for that. Nevertheless. I know you want to discuss parks, Mary.
Sure, yeah, let's do that. We had a meeting of the committee with the mayor present on May the 8th and we were initially going to look at the determining path forward to compare the cost of relocating versus the actual, whatever necessary repairs might be needed to bring the existing location up to, to make it more usable. But as we discussed the different alternatives and the costs associated with it, the question was raised as to whether we really need to continue with a park because of the cost that it's going to put on the burden on the park, on the city for the costs. So we wanted to bring that up to the board and have them discuss it and make a motion on whether or not we should continue or discontinue the park.
Any discussion on that you guys like to have or think valid, I mean, it's the open for me.
Yeah, given the problems associated with maintaining it, policing it, the current drug use that's going on in the area and property damage.
And the lack of use.
And the, yeah, lack of use and the materials left behind, drug paraphernalia, it would seem to be logical to shut it down or at least have something more public view where stuff can be maintained more easily at a future time. And my only concern would be if there's, we discussed this before, but for our residents and our voting public, you know, if they, ones with kids or whatever may, I think they'd need an opportunity to respond to it. So, you know, since we're in public forum now, if anyone has concerns about this, they might bring it to the board, this is the time to do it, so.
Anybody guess, Frank?
I believe you have an ordinance set up so that someone wants to use the park, an organization, they can reserve it and they pay so much for the permit and then the city employee will come and unlock the restrooms so they can use it and that, far as I know, it only happened with Easter egg hunts from.
The Baptist church, I think, did too.
The Baptist church and score.
Yeah.
I mean, I have used it personally for my oldest one, for his birthday in May, but I don't know who else has.
But it's, it's something people are kind of used to and they should have that option, it should stay, you know, if they want to reserve it and have it for an event or anything that's a problem.
Yeah, that's really the issue. If it should stay, then the public should be seen and heard on this. If they don't respond to it, then the assumption is that they either don't know or don't care. So in that scenario, then the greatest good would be to reduce the risks that we have associated with it and to be a little bit more proactive instead of maintaining something at so expense with mowing, maintaining the public facilities, bathroom, police in the area, cleaning up drug paraphernalia, et cetera. So that's really the issue and I don't think that any one person should say shut it down or leave it open, but as a group, I think it's the greatest good to let the public know that they need to respond to it and that they do it great and if they don't, great also, so.
So you're suggesting to join in to that side? What would you do is maybe take a poll?
Yeah.
And see what the community thinks.
Sure.
Score did a poll a long, rather years ago and they didn't even know we had a park.
A lot of people don't and then, you know, lately we had some property destruction with this, like when it tore out and the bathrooms got smashed again, even though there's barge gates, you know what I'm saying?
The fact that you take a poll would allow the public, you know, the logic would dictate that if you're taking a poll, then you'd then automatically know that there is a park, so it solves two issues at the same time.
And the Baptist church didn't have to restart the hunt in the park this year because they cut the pavilion down and are doing an honorable.
Yeah, it's experienced. So you suggest that maybe have a public forum on it, hearing, public hearing?
Yeah, or is people suggested a poll of some kind? We're not voting on this, so there's no really, it's on the table and everything because it says, it is discussed apart, which we already did.
Okay. I did, well, what I supposed to do about Mr. Wybrick since he saved his $600 on the civil mower and that.
Yep.
I talked to Annette when she called me, she had no, you know, problem with him, of him going down and cutting that and bailing that.
Yeah, I've got two restrictions on it.
That way we're not spending any expenditures and it's not going to lay waste to, so.
And given that he's helped us, which is quite good, which saves the city money, then it's a viable exchange for the services.
Does anybody in board have any reservations or concerns on that?
I looked at the deed and I didn't see any restrictions, so we could not use it for something else that way.
That way it's, you know, it's still maintained in a way and it's cut down and managed that way, so it makes sense that instead of us having, you know, labor, time cost and everything else, plus it's still going to decal whatever, so. I just want to get your guys' opinion on it, so if you're okay with it, I'll let them know.
Yes, sir.
Okay, all right. All right, resolution for the clean water engineering program, grant program. That's for that final one we're going to give for the engineering school.
Yeah, it's just, I just feel like, basically, a motion to have a resolution.
All right.
Just enter.
So in your packets, the application, I already submitted with Mary, but we as a board have to have a resolution and a bill number assigned. That's just per the laws there. We're already good on the application, they just have to get this and the ball's already rolling, so the bill's resolution, it's 2024, it's been signed, April was under that, representative. So if you make a motion, my recommendation is make a motion to approve this resolution so we can get this grant fully in operation going forward for the plant, wastewater treatment plant, and they also included engineers in that too.
Yeah, the engineering services grant, the purpose is, it's a first step in handling our wastewater issues, so this is a, it's mandatory or necessity if we're going to make any progress in this direction, we definitely need to do that. So make a motion to adopt resolution number 2024 regarding the wastewater infrastructure engineering.
That's our second motion, made to seven, all favor.
Aye.
Anybody in that code? All right, let it loop and pass. Is there any mercy going on?
No, I have not, but I do want to let you guys know next week, I will be here tomorrow until 1:00 and then I will be out of office next week. I am going on vacation. If there's an emergency, please contact Frankie or contact Adam or contact the police department.
This is maybe an emergency, I don't know, but we have a sign in Santa Dets, one of our businesses, Bader's, is having a 50-year anniversary. Do you know? This weekend?
Right, and we'll be on DVD this weekend? It's Saturday, I'm pretty sure.
Thinking we're in St. Louis, so this is, yeah, gets in time during the day, but I'll be up in North St. Louis from 6:00 PM to 6:00 in the morning, Saturday night and Sunday morning. So I say die on Saturday night?
As always, it's an evening and it's gonna be a big one.
So we'll need some assistance from someone just to handle. So we'll need some assistance from someone just to handle traffic related issues, so to get somebody to arrest.
So, that will have issues with them parking backwards, forwards, all over Third Street. On the side says, do not park.
Yeah.
So we know the sheriffs, I don't know if they've hired someone to help with traffic control or anything like that, but that would probably be.
I can make a request and make, get them to talk to Sheriff's Service or see, or have a meeting, but I'm gonna see how that goes.
I know the last time they had it, it was a while back, it's been a while back, but they asked us to close down Third Street between here and Seater Park, either way.
Well, I think we gotta have a permit to shut down roadway, they've eaten it, don't we?
Don't remember.
For a block or something like that for usage? I don't know, I'll check on that. I mean, is that what they're asking?
They, they usually don't bring it.
I'm just a little out of safety concern with this because I worked their big one and I had state, county, me and all down the area included.
Yeah, so we need to, this, this weekend, we need to get on that.
Yeah, I mean, because a presence is better than none.
Yeah, I mean, all, you know, people, someone could, I mean, even under normal circumstances, not a comedy here, someone backing over someone in their driveway, you know.
Well, yeah.
I'm serious.
You're right, you're right.
Like that, so, I don't know. So in here, given that there perhaps is a decent rate, uh, something like that, you know, high.
Always know the sheriff's department also a little know what's happening and that way they're all aware.
Everybody's safe and happy.
Yes.
And no one's life is miserable.
And they can still have fun and all that, so, I mean. All right, police department, Doc, there.
Uh, taken three reports, two saw lawnmowers and illegal dumping that I'm still, that I need help with and getting some names in regards to that. Renewed some certifications for our mules the last couple days, is there a uniform law enforcement system? So that is completed. And I know I've been out of touch for a couple months, I know everybody is aware of the family emergency that happened and we are still working, there is out of discharge a day in regards to that, so we'll still be up in St. Louis Children's Hospital for months. And I'm trying to get back into a normal schedule, my other son had a wreck on 55 and so avoiding a deer and he decided to hit the cement wall with his car, so. So anyway, so things have been kind of hectic personally in officer corporate world, but the, but taking three reports, trying to get back to some kind of normal professionally and personally, but it's been a struggle. I'm still available, my cell phone, email, Miss Bergen, I know I got an email not long after it happened and that was very sweet of you, so I thank you for that. Also, property of the antique mall, today I reached out to Scott Properties and they told me that that ownership of that land was transferred to a Bobby Fisher, not the chess player, but the, but somebody named Bobby Fisher, so I don't know who that is, but hopefully they can get that land a little bit more under control with the.
Yeah, masturbate and it's going to be addressed, yes.
Good. Other than that, I don't patrol today, I'll be here, I think part of the morning tomorrow, but I'll do a little bit better, I'll be better with communication as well. I know, given everything, it was, it's been very, very stressful, but I'll be better with communication, letting you know my schedule and the hours that I'll be here and hopefully my kids stop running, so. But if you, if you need me, I'm available, be in communication at any time, so.
Oh, and also, I got you a body camera.
Oh, is it here now?
I ordered one and I'm donating, I'm donating to the police department.
There you go.
From where I'm at all times, and the other car camera is gonna be hooked up as well.
True.
So, and stick around after the meeting.
Good.
Fire department.
No, we had a total of 10 calls, five medic, two motor vehicle accidents, and I'm three mutual aid calls, two of them St. Jan, one in Central. Fifty-one, we had Sentinel work on our new barge gauge that we installed on it a few years ago, we tried to get it set up, it wasn't working properly the way we need to set it up, we was doing it by book, found out that sensor was bad in the tank. I guess we get that sensor, censors when they're brand new too, so. So it's up and going now, so we can, we got to, a lot of LED gauge on the back of it, tell us how much water we have in the tank instead of, well, you tell it to go bone dry. Anyway, I'm, need to possibly get ready to do pump testing, I know it costs it to get pump testing done, but that's what helps with our ISO ratings, to make sure we don't failures in the pumps and have it flow. I'm trying to set that up with, hopefully, Zelle. We talked about it, Zelle or Wine Garden, we normally, all of us get together at one location and do it all in one day. Anyway, which I got 41 and 42 that hopefully will be done this year. So anyways, that's probably gonna take effect, I'll know more about it here within the next probably month here. The other question is on the old 41, old yellow. We're wanting to make more room in our firehouse because we're possibly, hopefully, might be accommodating another brush apparatus, that's what I'm trying to go for right now. It'd help us out with brush hoppers through the woods and stuff, we need fields, having two brush trucks because I do not have no rolling pumps. So anyways, all my pumpers are stationary except for my brush truck, but that's so heavy trying to get out to field. So we're talking to the conservation about hopefully another brushing it. But we're gonna keep the 71 we have, which if we get a new one here, it's gonna be 72. Because we were kind of going on the foundation of, is it more feasible with the side-by-side or is it more feasible with the brush truck? And talked to a few departments, brush truck is the way to go, we carry more water, volunteer on if we have to, we can make shovels and stuff. Side-by-sides are nice, going through like ATV trails or wherever, you know, inside of woods, but we're not, not having to tamper fighting field fires and brush line fires, so. Anyways, so what we're wanting to do is hopefully, you guys talked about, you know, purple way before, so we're trying to see if we could actually put that on a purple way, if we could take pictures of it or whatever and put a starting amount on it and see where it goes, or we can just take bids and see where it goes and, you know, whatever. I was gonna talk to you guys about donating to another department that lost everything, but I think they all got accommodated on newer stuff, so I, I mean, it's still a good truck, it's just, it's not feasible for us to have three apparatuses, pump operations in our firehouse, we're not that big of a, you know, town. Because like our 41 now, we had done, it normally goes a mutual aid call unless 42 is requested for commercial fires or whatever, that's the biggest pumping apparatus we have. So that's what we're kind of looking into on that, so you guys tell me and we can try to get some situated for that.
Hey, Frank, will it still fit over here like it used to be or?
Uh, it was stuck in over here, you know, but I really don't want to move it down here because due to the, you know, pile truck, winter con tractor, anything like that.
We'll have it so by then.
It's been sitting here as long as it has, I ain't really too worried.
Well, you said it was in the ways.
Well, it's not in the way at the moment, if we do decide to, if everything works out to get this other truck.
Will that be an option now?
Yes.
Okay.
Because I really don't want to drain the water out, if we drain the water out, then it could rust the tank, put pinholes in it, so I don't want to do that. That one's fixed.
Yeah, they're really.
Yeah, it's all looking really pretty cool. Yeah, that's, that's all I have on fire.
No, oh, I want to read, we did have a meeting, me and Mary, with the public water district over the use of him, when we have fires and refuel, let's try to get away from rates. I haven't heard back from Wes yet, I don't know if you reached out or not, I haven't time, but that was brought up about possibly when we have a fire or further training, excuse me, you know, that way we can kind of not get billed for a bunch of water for them having to do mandatory training, or if we have a structure fire and, you know, we've got mutual aid coming in and we're refilling their stuff too, you know, and it's just, you know what I'm saying, and then we're on hook for the bill too as well.
Good.
So I know they had a little closed session afterwards, but I haven't heard nothing yet, so.
Okay.
I just want to make that aware. At the, um, what, Frankie, water, what?
Water, water.
Water, what a street, I'm sorry.
Street?
Yeah, go.
So I'll speak briefly because I've had some involved, but that's a sweet Frankie's done a great job repairing some water lines that have been leaking and wastewater plants has really been generating this doctor handles some issues that are at a crisis point which will now hopefully be resolved within the next few days. And part of it has to do with sludge removal because that hasn't been done in forever and it's created a significant backup that needs to be, that needs to be addressed emergently and, or it's on the cusp of it. So we have that rolling and that required the approval of the board to push that through so that we can handle it without any further delay because it's, Frankie, it's gone way too long. Speaking of Frankie, Frank. I caught that.
The street, street forested, third one pine and third, not pine, third. Third street and Sycamore, we am, need to address that hillside that I dug up, the roadway, if we start getting any more hard rain, it's gonna wash the whole thing out. It's already washed it out a couple of times. I know we did get a bid around one, haven't got a bid from the other yet, and we can work on hopefully getting a bid from the other ones.
I said that.
But it does need to be addressed before we go back into range even.
Sure, the mayor and I discussed putting some rip rap on there next week to stem some of the smaller gravel drainage, so.
Especially I have on that, on the street side at the moment.
All right, water, wastewater department.
So? Waterside, we had two leaks, one on Point Sycamore, third on Third Street and Sycamore. The problem with that is, I'm, like I said before, the copper that they use is cheap copper and it's been really aggressive, the ground's been acid and the ground's been peaty. And then our water, basically, we took out a hundred, a hundred foot of copper that was pitted up, it was in some tin, tin, it was a mess. Anyways, I'm, it had more pinhole we'd seen than what we were seeing, so. So it was just basically French green in the ground, so, and then the big one happened and that's what showed. Yesterday we had another water leak, and we got it fixed. There's a lot of flaws and there's some work I'll get to happen, and we've been seeing quite a bit of that, so. The issue is, is we're probably going to keep on having these problems wherever we have to replace it. Leaks are fixed on us, the maintenance should be all right, they're strictly made for electric equipment, but I think things got taken out the easy way out, that's why I thought. The other thing is back teeth, they come about good. We had VNR inspection for Waterside, everything went well with that, we only got hit on one thing and that's how the backup operator. We've had that numerous times beforehand and it happens every year, or every time we're inspected, we're going to have actually two operators, one's a chief operator and the other one's a backup. But we went here for a year with just one operator till, I mean, it's not a violation, it's just a recommendation to have two operators. Because if anything was such happen to the chief operator, then there's nobody, you know, to come on, so. And then, whoa, suicide, wastewater side, we're gonna be hauling sludge tomorrow, we're gonna be hauling a hundred and ten dollar gallon guy altogether, that's four years worth of sludge, that shouldn't ever happen, but funds, I understand. So we're gonna be hauling that out. The other thing is, is I've contacted VNR because we were having a situation where we could have had a bypass and informed them what we're going on and staying on top of them about it, as soon as the sludge is gone, we get the plant back in a hundred percent, well, we shouldn't say a hundred percent, ninety-five percent operation where it's, you know, then I will contact VNR back in, inform them that everything's clear and we're good and they'll write it off, but they do know everything that's going on right now. Grinders, had to replace a couple of floats on a couple of them, still have the issue of Baters, still trying to get the, the Bater bar over here, trying to get a bigger pump for that since they got more facility now. I already know that they're paying the, I guess, the commercial side of it already, so I'm trying to see if we can get a bigger pump that is more feasible for the material that's coming in and all that. I'm still in, works with, is working with Dan from Flow Systems, working with him, he's supposed to call me back and let me know what's the next big pump that we can put in there without having to put more new pit. It's working right now, fingers crossed, but it won't hold, so we got that, uh, taken care of. Another issue is, we still have grinders that needs to be replaced with the new ones, can't help it, I wish I was free, anyways, but I'm, having been helping, we had a lot here lately and my son Kyle, we helped, we had a lot too. We're trying to get things done, but whenever facilities start acting up and that's, okay, no, so we gotta kind of move to that priority, so, sorry about the situation that's happening. The other thing is, I did get asked tonight, Dean Menard contacted me earlier, he's got two lots up here on Seventh Street that he bought, one of them's got a grinder on it and a meter on it already, other lot doesn't have, so he's gonna probably be in contact with trying to see what we need to do on that part. I had a theory of doing on one part, but I'm, we'll wait, I'll be ready for it. The other thing is, gonna be doing a new water tap for, I guess, Stephanie Mall, is that what it is, up on Seventh Street, we're gonna have a secondary water meter only, it's not gonna be, had it on to, it's gonna be water purposes only, for using it for whatever they need, even in their pool or whatever, so that's gonna be a construction here for a month, so that's basically all I have.
Frank, I was gonna ask you, in dealing with the sludge related issues, you had to call, you were calling different vendors and they were always asking about our horrible reports that had to do with the percent sediment or whatever it is, and I never knew how to answer it. And I was told that you had the reports, probably at the water plant, so if, when you generate those, can you provide us here with the?
So what are you meaning, are you meaning the TFS or are you meaning?
TFS.
The spinning solids or?
Actually, I think it was all of it, the solids was one of the.
So you have the solids, April gets in every month, or every week, weekly.
Okay.
And she can make coffee for you.
TFS. Well, it's not for me, but, so they're here and if I get a call, I go, April, where's this? And so anything really.
Well, anything, and just being truthfully, if there's anything with a. Well, anything, and just being truthfully, if there's anything with a vendor or anything like that, then you can contact operator. Because my thing about it is, is if you tell them one thing wrong, then it could be a big issue. And I'm not saying you don't know nothing about anything with wastewater or water side, but there's a lot of Spanish words out there. You know, that you're, 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 you know, talking about, then you know, uh, I mean, you know, they ask about B O Bs or anything like that, you know what that is or anybody, it's just a point. They are, you know, half time, if it's a vendor trying to sell something, I might go talk to the mayor, cause I own the part, I already got what I mean. Um, but if it's, you know, anything like that, uh, doing the D N R and things, normally nine out of ten, they wanna talk to the operator. And I ain't, and I ain't got a file in the paperwork, she can, she can set that up, she got it on file here every, every, you know, cause we only do, like, our big, our big test, we're gonna do that. Um, you know, every three months, so it's every quarter, so we're four quarters a year, so we only do one test every three months, the big test. Now, T S S, um, or suspended solids is on.
Is that one weekly?
Yeah, it's weekly, now, T S S.
T S S, total suspended solids?
Yeah, total suspended solids, so I don't do them, uh, all the time, cause I kinda look at my suspended solids. But if I see something going on, like right now with the plant and, uh, what it's trying to do, um, I took one and they checked it out for me, yes, it is hot. Um, but I can't help that.
Right.
Um, but as soon as the sludge is full, everything will hopefully go back and get operations. And the only reason why I have reports at home is because I don't have internet.
No, I understand.
So I take it all home and put it on the computer at home, so. Our April got mine set up down here too, so on Friday, you gotta come down and give me a take.
Yeah, that's good for the board, I wanna thank you for, uh, for all you've done and watched you, you know, with, uh, breaking cakes up and stuff like that. It's really amazing to see, uh, what you do on a daily basis and how much we need it, you know, so, thank you.
More, more time.
Parks, cemetery, animal control.
Okay, so is parks, I guess I'll, uh, April on the poll.
Yeah.
Yeah. That's all, really all I have right now, can talk about that. Uh, the damaged monuments in the cemetery, the, I found out that the foundation for the restoration is named Genevieve, it's a private group, they have the same issues that we would have. Because the lots are, you know, owned by the families and they're supposed to maintain it. And basically what the foundation does, they put their best effort to get approval from the owner of the cemetery, which is either the archdiocese or the city and then the family before they can do anything to the monuments. So I think we, you know, really the best bet would be to have this be performed by some private organization as opposed to the city. I'm not opposed to going up and taking some photos of the damaged monuments and trying to contact the family to, to make them aware of the damage and see if we can get them to repair.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Another question in the budget, uh, where it's, you know, I always look at the percent utilized year to date. And cemetery, we had, you know, a couple thousand dollars competing in the year, or two and a half. Is that from Elaine or what are those from, it's all from her, right? Okay.
Animal, I don't have anything back when she has anything.
No, are dogs used for cows and chickens?
Well, there's a murdering dog around because, and I think it's from that first house on Center, so I walk by there in the morning.
Oh, no.
And, uh, I saw it out in a field, uh, um, across from the granola, or diet, uh, granola there, taking down a big bunny or something like that, or a groundhog, so. Uh, that's running loose and there's a, there's a tri-color, larger, uh, black dog that looked like it was Park College.
Oh.
And the significance of that is that, you know, dogs don't go, I'm only gonna kill a bunny today. It's like, whatever, they have a prey drive, predator drive, whatever they see, whether it be someone's cat or small dog or whatever.
Sure.
They'll, they'll take it down, unless they start doing that, if there's a little kid running.
Oh, sure.
They may.
Gay one, gay one.
They have their deals or something, so it's still, uh, not an obvious issue.
People in that area, sir.
Did the house with the five dogs over by Baders?
They're getting reowned and they're, you know, it's in there.
That's all I have.
Alright, citizen participation, anybody want to call?
Don't worry, mate.
Alright. Motion to adjourn and go on the close, speak, motion to adjourn, go on the close session.
Close session.
Question made, second and authored.
Bye.
Any close?